Okay. Welcome to the city council meeting. It's August 1st at seven o'clock and welcome everybody here and everybody on Zoom and just for your note, as row call, we have four of our city council present and online we have Betsy Montoya, who is also a council member. However, she's in Florida and she is participating live and so we'll hear from her with a microphone over it, okay? I'd like to invite anybody that would like to open with an invocation or a inspirational thought.
Mayor, you want to do the pledge first?
Oh yeah, that might help. We'll do that. How about, would anyone like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I'll do that, Mayor, if you want me to.
Mike?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm in a hurry to pray and at least our veteran knew that we needed to do the pledge of allegiance, so I stand corrected. Gee, thank you, Art. Would someone offer an invocation or an inspirational thought for us tonight?
I'll be glad to.
Thank you.
Dear Father in heaven, we're grateful for the opportunity we have to meet as a council, grateful for the citizens that are here. We ask thy spirit to be here with us as we discuss the matters of business for the city that we might make decisions that are in the best interest of all. We're grateful for the freedoms we enjoy for those that have caused us to have those freedoms and those that help us to maintain them. Bless us now and we thank thee for all that we have in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thanks, Art, and thanks, Mike. Appreciate it. This meeting is a little different than most other meetings. The only real thing on the agenda to start with is the formal public hearing. After that, we'll go into the business, which is the adoption of the certified tax rate. And that will depend on the outcome of the discussion and how things move forward. So everything that's on the agenda is wide open. There are some rules to the formal public hearing, and that is you will be timed. You have five minutes and I have seven people on the list, so we're gonna just start straight with that and
You'll move to open the public hearing, make a motion.
Oh, that's true. Just trying to move along. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Oh, second.
Councilman Adcock?
Aye.
Councilman Sitaway?
Aye.
Councilman Meacham?
Aye.
Councilman Hathaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Montoya?
Aye.
Thank you. First on our public hearing is Martin Pace. Do you want to come to the podium and?
So, I'm here for some education and then to ask some questions as far as the tax increase. Obviously, some of you know me and I'm definitely not against giving you guys raises and stuff. My question is, my question is, why such a hike? If it went like a 25%, nobody would've said anything, but 50% in addition is a little steep for me. And then I also had a question of, so along with these taxes, I know, you know, these guys have to protect us, have to provide fire, and it's, it's a, so many officers and so many firefighters per person in the town. Why are we tripling the town? I moved here to have a little, you know, to get out of Orem and stuff, and now we're gonna be bigger than Orem. We've tripled our size. Obviously, it's expensive. That's why we have such a big tax increase. Another question is, where's the water coming from? I know you guys put a new irrigation tank in, but what about culinary water? Where are we getting it from? And is that part of this tax increase?
Thank you, Martin. Just to note, we are taking notes and we're gonna answer these questions at the end of this and not just leave it open. We want to get the notes out. So, anyway, that's, I think, the easiest way for it to do it. We do have answers for all those. Next is Gary Riding.
Oh, I signed the wrong piece of paper.
Fair enough. Wrong piece of paper. Should I just write that down? Pam Norton? Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, but we're broadcasting and so in order for people to hear your comments, it has to go through the microphone, so thank you.
It's all those years teaching school.
It is. If you can teach junior high, I have allowed enough voice. Okay.
And then close to the microphone, if you would please. Thank you. There you go. You can pull it right down.
Okay, I'll try to do it right. I'm Pam Norton. I have lived here for 46 years. We came here a long time ago, obviously, like I just said, and I've been involved with Santaquin and people here in Santaquin for a long time. Some of these officers were my little students.
We're sorry. No, I'm just kidding.
No, so I've known some of them since they were probably 11, sixth graders. They are fine, fine people and they deserve very much to have comparable salaries to people who live in surrounding areas. We depend on them for every time we need a safe call. If my house is burning, I want some well-trained firemen to be available to come to my house. If I need emergency services, I want well-trained people to be able to respond quickly to any needs that I have. Constant turnover is not conducive to good training. We lose too many good people. We waste too much time and too much money with constant turnover and constant training. My tax bill would go up, it says $157.62 over a year. I don't love increases in taxes. I don't love that the gas just went up. Did you see those prices today? I hate that. It's hard to live. I'm on a fixed income. I understand this, but I also believe that in order to keep our citizens safe, that we need to support this increase in property taxes. Thanks.
Thank you. Linda Kennison?
Name and how long I've been here. We first moved in, Linda Kennison.
You're good with that.
We first moved in in 79, so I've been here a long time. We've gone away and come back a few times, but Santaquin's still home. We were here when the first sewer system went in and we were told that it would be about $50 a month, and as the city got bigger, because we were real little then and we didn't pay any money, our septic tanks took care of us. But as the city gets bigger, then the sewer bills will go down. I'm seeing huge sewer bills every month now that's way bigger than, you know, $50. But I also noticed when the city budget came through, you know, in the mail not too long ago, that money is taken from this to put to here and this to put to here and back and forth, and sewer money is getting put into the regular city budget. I want our police officers to have twice as big a paychecks as what they're getting, because I don't think $30 or $28 or whatever it is per hour is enough for the responsibility that they have. But I think the money needs to come from someplace other than the pockets of senior citizens by doubling our property tax. The city is being funded by sewer and water and all kinds of other stuff, and the city's big enough to be paying our own way without doing it the way that it's being proposed. So, that's all I gotta say tonight.
Thank you. Dale Summerhaze?
Name's Dale Summerhaze. I guess I'm a newcomer. I've been here since 2018. That's fairly recent. Gentlemen, I'm not gonna waste any time reviewing the merits of this proposal because it's already done. You gentlemen have made up your minds. You're gonna pass this. Doesn't matter what we say tonight. Under truth and taxation, taxpayers have no vote. You have no vote in what goes on. It's basically a dog and pony show that's required by law. You have to listen to. 97% of the proposed tax increases from municipalities last year through truth and taxation were approved. So, this meeting, it doesn't make any difference in what the outcome is. You're gonna pass this. But I will talk about how the proposal was presented to the Santaquin citizens. First of all, is the police vehicles. I'll read from the news release. The city is proposing to purchase two needed police vehicles, period. Okay, three significant words were left out. Those words are each year, forever. It should've read, the city is proposing to purchase two needed police vehicles each year, forever. That's what's gonna happen. There's a big difference between two police cars and two police cars each year, forever. That should've been specified and made clear to the taxpayers. Again, from the news release, the number of homes in Santaquin City has grown an unprecedented 107% in the past 10 years, yet during the same time period, the property tax rate has decreased by 57%. This task, this tactic is used by most taxing entities to lead taxpayers into thinking that they are getting the tax rate because the rates have gone down. A decrease in tax rate, everyone, is not a good thing. It's a bad thing because it means the property values are skyrocketing. There's no legitimate reason to bring up tax rate decreases unless the aim is to mislead taxpayers. Unprecedented growth means unprecedented increases in sustained tax levels. If growth slows, the city still receives sustained revenue from previous growth. The city is receiving substantially more revenue now than it did 10 years ago, substantially more, and it stays at that level. Municipalities also know that the best way to get the approval of taxpayers for a tax increase is to focus the increase on first responders. Two reasons for that. Taxpayers have a soft spot for these gentlemen. We appreciate what they do. And taxpayers can also be threatened with the loss of vital services if the tax increase is not passed. Last Thursday, we were treated to a host of threats if this proposal is not passed. Delay in police response, or no response, no answer or delayed conversation when dialing 911, delays in urgent care, ambulance arrival, and other EMT services. I would hope that the city would have more respect for its taxpaying citizens than to threaten them in this manner. As I understand it, the first responders have already received their raises with no apparent funding plan. But I would suggest there probably was a plan to fund these things, and that plan was this tax increase. Seems to me that you just have to wait till June to officially propose, because that's what the law says. So you had to use rainy day funds in the meantime. But the resolve of the tax increase being given early is this tax increase. Now, Mayor Olson made quite a point, that property taxes only cover two weeks of operation expenses, and that basically we should be ashamed of ourselves for not paying a larger portion. I think that that was demeaning to Santaquin residents who are trying to make ends meet financially. At the Thursday meeting, one of the council members at the end expressed his opinion, even though the truth and taxation process was not complete, he'd already made up his mind. We can tell how he is gonna vote because he expressed an opinion before the truth and taxation process took place.
Time.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Leroy Kinder?
That guy speaks a lot better than I do, so maybe it'll take my time too. So, anyway, how's everybody doing tonight? Hope everybody's great. Y'all know my position. I actually support this. So I'm here, actually, to give a little advice. So I think I'm old enough I can give advice now. My kids don't listen to it, so maybe we can here. These, these fine gentlemen, they did receive their raises a little earlier and everything, and then the tax came around and things like that. A lot of people do feel like they were kind of duped and, and things. And I would just say, in the future, maybe have that all out there way, way sooner. Again, I support this, but like this, this fine lady said, gas prices today took, I mean, they went through the roof in like 15 minutes. So, I'm just, I'm just hoping, again, I'm just gonna reiterate, that you guys have done your due diligence. I know that, that all you guys and Betsy are great people. You guys truly have the city's best interest at heart. You guys do a good job. You guys do a thankless job. And I know I've, I've been a little thankless of you guys in the past also. I probably will be again one day, but we'll see how it plays out. But I would, I would actually, I'd like to see you guys pass this. I know that it's gonna hurt some people. Hopefully, what you're passing is what you need. If there's a chance that you don't need that much, maybe don't, don't approve so much. But the need's real and it's there. And to this gal who was the teacher, I don't think Chief Lynn was ever a little kid. Anyway, that's all I gotta say. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
I think it's Dr. K Wells?
It's Dick Wells.
Oh. Oh, you know what? Okay, well.
So, Richard Wells, go by Dick. I have grown up in Payson my whole life, moved to Santaquin in 2018. I have been self-employed for about 10 years, run a business. We've about 15 employees nationwide. So, small business, but, you know, I understand budgets. I understand allocating money. And the thing that just kind of is off-putting is this has nothing to do with the police or the fire or the EMT. When I went to the open house, you made it very clear that this money is going to the general fund. If it goes to the general fund, you can use that money however you see fit. Every year, you pass the budget, you stick to the budget, you audit it on the budget, but at the end of the day, it's going to the general fund. And so, it's a little deceitful, the way you guys are trying to pass this, making making the police officers, the EMTs, the things that are important to our city as the hinge point to say, you know, we have to pass this because if not, you know, yada, 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 we're not gonna be able to fund them. So, it's, it's a little deceitful and so people don't really understand how, you know, the budget works or how the money works. All this money is gonna go into the general fund. That's why you can take money from the sewer and push it however you want, because it goes in the general fund. So I think what we need to do is not deceive the people of the city and try to pass this money as, you know, making the police officers as the hinge point. I think it's, I think it's a little bit steep to pass by 50%. I'm pro-small government. I'm pro-make-do-with-what-you-have. And, you know, again, I'm not against the police officers, you know, having the money, having, or having the EMTs have the money or whatever. We need to fund the city, but I think we need to be upfront with the people and let them know it's all about the budget and what we allocate the budget for. So it has nothing to do with two cop cars a year. You guys get to decide that year after year with the budget you guys set. So, that's my frustration. I understand, you know, you guys have to run the city. I understand you have to allocate money. You can push money here and there, but it's a, it's a, it's a budget issue, not, we don't have enough money for the firefighters, or we don't have enough money for the police officers. So, it is a little bit frustrating. You know, I wish you would be a little bit more forthright, a little bit more, you know, let us know exactly what it is versus trying to pass it using our emotions, making us, it's manipulative. So anyways, those are my thoughts. I am against such a high increase. I'm also against government waste. So if there's a way you guys can run your city with the current budget, great. If you have to raise rates to run the budget, I understand that too, but don't manipulate the, don't manipulate us and say, you know, if we don't pass this, we can't fund the police officers. It's, if I don't allocate budget, we can't fund the police officers. So, those are my thoughts. Hope you guys can think about it and realize it's a budget issue and we just need to look at that, that way. And, and again, you know, the government should be funded to a certain point, right? It should not have the best things. It shouldn't have everything because at the end of the day, it's our money.
Thank you.
Thanks.
One last person is Lynn Adams.
Appreciate the opportunity to be able to speak. I'm Lynn Adams. I've been here for 29 years. I've been, as I've been listening to things being said, I've been trying to wrap my head around some of it and seeing where they're all going. Yeah, it becomes a budget issue. And in your business, if you have a budget and you have a shortfall, it goes across the country, it sounds like, wherever your people are. Your constituents don't need to get it, don't get a choice to decide how much you raise it. You have to look at the budget and decide what we need. We're not gonna make these funds. We need more for the fire, is what we've been told. It's either we take it yes or no. And we look at that and say, okay, where else do we get it? You can spread the cost across the nation and wherever you're selling to. In my business, I can sell it across a certain area, limited by government, which regulates how much I can get reimbursed for it. So no matter what I raise mine to, I can only get so much, so I have to cut back. I think our city does cut back. I think our city runs very lean. They're very, each of these individuals have to live under the same laws and rules that we all live in this city. So, I don't think they've gone after this lightly. I don't think they've gone after emotions and trying to say, oh, it's the police, we're gonna lose things. They're gonna say, well, we may lose some if we keep losing individuals and we don't have the funds. We see a drastic decrease in the amount of homes being built. That's a drastic decrease in money coming into the city. There is no other way. They've held off for 10 years of raising our taxes and we have no other way except the city's pockets. And they look at it and try to make the very best decision possible, much better than Naval School District does to raise our taxes. I'm very frustrated more with Naval School District than I am with what our city's doing here. So I appreciate very much what you've done as you've looked at the budget and looked at what money we do have, and if we don't have enough, we do need to keep our police officers. We do need to keep our first responders, and thank you for being here. Because without them, we have a lot of other problems that can develop in the city that, that affects every one of us. So, thank you for looking at this. Yeah, do I, am I happy about paying more? No, no one is. But we're part of a group, of a city, of individuals, and thank heavens we can be here to discuss our opinions. And I thank you for giving us the choice. I don't think it was predetermined. You've looked at the numbers. You think it's needed, and you'll look at how we've responded to make your decision, your vote today. So thank you very much.
Thank you. That is the end of the list. However, is there someone that would like to say something after they've heard these? Of all people, I thought you would.
Is he coming? Brendan's coming.
If you would, state your name, please.
Hi, my name is Brendan Bowen. I've lived here for 20 some odd years, but I came in a little bit late, but hearing some of the comments, I appreciate everybody's opinion, and I just wanted to chime in and say that I think it's something we could all agree on, that the property tax is probably the most insidious of all the taxes. It's the one that can really attack the basis for our foundational government here. But in the meantime, we have a state that limits the ability for a city to raise funds without relying on that. So outside of a completely different system, that's what we have. We can't have enough bake sales to pay for the police force. So, anyway, that's the lot we're dealt by the state. I've talked to people within the city, outside of the city, different aspects to this. It's not just a black and white issue. It's, this is the lot that the city's dealt, and that's how we do it here in this state. Not every state has a property tax, and I wish Utah didn't. I wish we would do it through a consumption tax or something similar, but that's not how Utah set up. But outside of Utah changing that, I don't see there's too many other options, and I appreciate all the work that everybody at the council and the mayor's done to make sure that this hasn't happened sooner. So, I just wanted to extend that appreciation that, you know, this has been put off and I don't like it, but I think it is necessary. And I think that all the things we see around the country on what's happening with reduced police force and with defunding the police, we've seen what happens. We don't want to go down that road. So anyway, that's all I have to say about that. This is kind of where we're at, and I do support it. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you. With that, and asking for other comments, we'll, we'll answer these questions, every one of them. But we need to close the public hearing. So, I would ask for a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Councilman Hathaway?
Aye.
Councilman Meacham?
Aye.
Councilman Sitaway?
Aye.
Councilman Adcock?
Aye.
Councilmember Montoya?
Aye.
Thank you. I wanna, are there any of the questions that were brought up? Do any of you want to answer before I jump in?
Go ahead.
I figured you'd say that.
Any of you don't want to answer, we can?
No, I want to hear from you guys too.
Well, I'll just say that this is not a predetermined decision. Honestly, Dave and I were talking about this this afternoon. We came in here not 100% certain how we were gonna vote. I'm still honestly not 100%. So, it's not, it wasn't predetermined. I've been thinking about both sides of this for three months. When it was originally proposed, I sent the mayor a rather extensive email saying why I'm not gonna vote for it. And he probably didn't like that very much. And a lot of the same concerns have been brought up in the open houses and here tonight, and, and I understand it. But to, just to come in and say that we've already made our decisions and none of this matters is a little insulting because I honestly, I'm still weighing it right now. And we'll see what happens in the next half hour or so, but this was not predetermined. It is definitely a need, but we're not just doing this as a dog and pony show. th- we're not just doing this as a dog and pony show.
Thank you. Dave, do you have something?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment or two. Um, first of all, I, I appreciate everybody that's been, has took their time to come and, and, and be a part of it and, and make your opinions stated. And I have no problem with the negative with the positive. The only thing I, I, I really take offense of is when I'm accused of being dishonest. And just so you know, I've never been dishonest in this position, never. I don't come in here to try to cheat people, I don't come in here to try to make things hard for people. My votes are always based on what's best for all the citizens of this town. For the people that wanna sit at home on the computers and badmouth, that's fine. But why don't you come and get educated in what's really going on before you decide to go down that road? Again, I don't, I, I am always open to discussion anytime and anything going on in the city. But to sit there and, and say we're dishonest or we're trying to hide something is ridiculous. This has been open and upfront and the information has been out there for several months now. There's, there's no hidden agenda here, there's no, there's no dishonesty or corruption going on here. We had police officers that were leaving this city to go to other cities for more money. This is where it started, it has nothing to do with any, because we're using the police and fire. We were losing police and fire and we couldn't get police and firemen to come and work here. So to, to, to blame it on us, some sympathy that we're using them guys, that's ridiculous. So just understand that the system is set up in this state where officers are leaving to go make more money and I don't blame them for that. I would too. But when we're at almost the second lowest in wages, what was gonna happen? Sure, they're gonna leave, but how hard is it when you, a, a fire, a police chief couldn't even get an application for an officer to come and work here? So I'm sorry, but the wages had to go up. Am I in favor of property tax? No. In fact, I'm on fixed income and this is gonna cost me a lot more than most of you because my landlords in, in commercial, it's gonna cost me a hundred dollars a month. But I'm gonna have to deal with that, right? I still gotta deal with it. But I have to look at what's best for everybody here. And having a good police department and a good fire department EMS to me is more important. So, thank you.
Okay.
I don't know what else the mayor could have done to make what we've gone through more transparent. Everything's been online, we've had numerous meetings inviting the public to attend. Uh, the mayor was here on three different evenings just to come and talk. And total for those three evenings combined, we had seven people attend. The information is there. As far as budgets are concerned, yes, money can be transferred from one area to the other. But taxes were raised ten years ago for a specific item and I don't remember what it is, help me out. Okay, roads. That money isn't used for anything but roads. This money, if this passes, is going to be strictly allocated to police, fire and EMS. It can't be used for anything else, it can't be transferred to any other category. It's solely isolated for the exact state, state purpose that we have stated all along from the very beginning. I'm with, with, uh, with Dave. I don't like people thinking that we're corrupt and dishonest. I have done everything in my entire life. Could be nothing but straightforward and honest. And when somebody thinks differently, it hurts. I do appreciate the public being here. We often sit here, just us, and we wonder, what are the citizens thinking? I, I think it's the, the vocal, vocal majority that, that comes out and expresses their displeasure in any kind of action that we have. But the, the majority of people that aren't against something that we're doing, they stay home, they don't come, like several of you had today, and support it. And I thank those that have mentioned that, that they support the actions that were taken. This is my third time on the city council, not three times in a row. Three different sessions, once in the eighties, once in the two thousand six and then now. And the only time we could get people to come to a meeting back then was if we were doing something with dog licensing. It's a little bit different now. I'm glad that, I'm glad people are, are expressing an interest. I'm glad that we've got six candidates running for election. We're, we're, we're not like some cities that can't get somebody to run. People in this community are, are good people, they want to help make our community better and that's why each one of us are on the city council now. And I, I totally support the effort. That's been a lot, Dan. But I appreciate the work that he's done to help improve the city with the industrial park and, and everything else that, and the businesses that have come in or are considering coming in. I know his wife feels like a widow sometimes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything, Lynn?
Yeah, I'll put my two cents in. None of us liked this. When this was proposed to us several months ago, that we may have to do this, not one of us liked the idea. Um, we live here too, we have to pay the taxes too. But as we looked at it, as we went through the numbers, we knew we had to increase the pay for our fire and police. We did that immediately to not lose anymore. And now we have to figure out how we're gonna pay for it. It wasn't predetermined that we were gonna raise taxes. And again, we, we all, we hated it. We sat down in several meetings, we just shook our heads, what, do we really have to do this? And went over it many, many times, um, in our budget meeting for hours. Talked about the decrease in building and how we're gonna continue to have funds. When the building was going fast, we had money. But it's a bad idea to live on homes being built. Uh, as one gentleman said, I, we don't necessarily want our city to keep growing, but we don't control that. Um, if you have property and you wanna subdivide it and you follow the rules, you get to do that. We don't get to say no. So w- we don't, we don't wanna do this, if it passes tonight, it's not our favorite thing. But after looking at the numbers, I feel like it's necessary. Uh, I am one who's already decided what I'm gonna do tonight. Because I've looked at it and I don't see any other way. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Betsy, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, thank you.
Okay. I do, I wanna answer a couple of these questions, but first I wanna start with the integrity of this council is most important. Most important to me, but most important to the citizens. If, if there's some reason that we feel like we've lost trust in anybody, I wanna make sure everybody knows, hey, we love this city, we love the people here. And there is nothing we're trying to do to deceive anybody. This is something that I have personally worked on with this staff and now this council as well for well over a year, almost a year and a half. And it wasn't, we need to look at taxes until I absolutely had to file with the state, was in March. And so considering it has taken that long, it wasn't taken lightly. We have made strategic cuts. We have lost employees that we didn't respond or didn't replace. We have changed the purchasing of much capital equipment and so, uh, we, we have got it even to where we had to take some money from our, uh, rainy day fund to get us through. But it was nowhere near the scare that we thought we were going to have to as we pared ourselves down, gone through this meticulously and made sure that we were addressing every problem. Every item that's brought up here, the council's already brought up. And, and we went through it and I'm thinking, you know, the cross-section of the council really reflects the cross-section of even what this group means tonight. You know? If, if you're not happy with this, with, with this, you know, most of us aren't really happy. You could walk down Main Street and walk up to anybody and say, hey, we're gonna raise your taxes, what do you think? And short of getting hit in the eye, you know, your answer a hundred percent of the time or a hundred and ten percent of the time is gonna be, no, what in the world are you thinking? I'm thinking, this has been hard. And the reason it's hard is we live here too. Anything that you feel is imposed upon the city, well, it's, it's a suicidal thought back at you because we have to live by it as well. And so, you know, it's not like, oh, it's you, not us, it's us, all of us. And so integrity, uh, studying out each of these issues, but more than anything, it's addressing what the need was. And the need started with the police department. And the police department went through a process of about four months of coming up with a plan of, of, uh, evaluating all of their, uh, costs for employees. And I'll answer your question on this, why are we going to twenty-five or fifty percent increases? It's not. That is the amount of money it takes for almost seventy employees. We have about sixty fire and EMS and about fifteen plus, uh, police. And, uh, we're looking at a whole bunch of people and each of their respective, uh, costs were weighed in and we went through, uh, process with the police chief, chief for a plan. How do we go forward? What are we gonna do with the vehicles? How do we do this? Because up till now, it was replaced four cars every year. And we didn't have the money to do that. And so with this budget, the replacement of the cars, which has been said over and over again, we have to do every year. But this tax increase only covers one point three cars. Not, not even full two, we have to still make cuts to come up with the rest of it. So it, it wasn't twenty-five percent, but it was fifteen percent that went out to most of the other cities, counties, everybody that we had to live up with, plus a cost of living for this year. And the cost of living that was thrown into this year earlier was adding another eight percent to it. And we pared that back. And we pared that back hoping for the future that we would be able to make sure that our police and our fire and our EMS are keeping up with cost of living. Now I know we all have to balance out what we make, how we live, how we spend our money, but I think we've done so very carefully, taken all of those into considerations. And I, I'm sorry, I think it's just a misunderstanding because you see that fifty percent that goes onto the tax, it really i- is accounted only to the police and the fire and the EMS, but it's spread across to where it isn't that high of a raise by far, okay? And I, I wanna jump over to Dr. Wells, still looks like Dr. Wells. He needs to come up here and we'll, we'll have a laugh about it. But, um, he said that, that, uh, we use them as a shield and, and really this, this money only goes to the police and fire and to those, to those, uh, vehicles and the EMS, nothing else. And where that money ends up, and, and I can't place it exactly as it hits the funds, but I did say, well, probably just goes into the general fund, but I specified it is audited within the city and it is audited by the state. We cannot increase taxes by a single mill without it being audited. When it's approved, it is for the police and for the police only. Ten years ago, when they approved it for the roads, it's for the roads. And over ten years, it is for the roads and it's still there and it is that same amount. So when, when all these things kinda look like they're changing and you think we're adding all these houses that bring so much in, really you have to think back and put on your hat and go, what could I buy ten years ago for a dollar? And how much does it cost me today? Because that's kind of what we're talking about with the taxes that were changed ten years ago. And what we have to do to not make up, because you can't make up for taxes, you have to start from square one. And, and for everybody that is here that was complaining about the building last year and the year before, before, that the city's got all these houses coming on, well, all that building is what made it possible that you didn't have to have your taxes raised because there was money coming in through those fees and, and other things that really covered a lot of things. And in fact, there's a lot of good that comes from even impact fees because that money is specified for parks and recreation and so many other things and can only be spent on that when a dollar comes in. And, and for instance, there are parks monies that are taken when homes are built that are, that are divided out of, out of those impact fees. And that particular amount goes for projects, parks or others that are directly related to that. And I heard over and over on the, on the internet, you know, that thing that governs everything we do, that why do we need a clock tower? Well, first off, I didn't vote on a clock tower. That wasn't something I had. And yeah, it has my father's name on it and I'm proud of my father, but my father wouldn't have wanted his name attached to it if, if everybody was complaining about it in the city. But the thing that people need to realize is the money that built that clock tower came through impact fees and a portion that was already designated that had to be spent on a park or a piece that was designated by the council. And the rest of it was given by Macy's to make that. So when you say, oh, my tax dollar did that, no, your building permit did that. And it wasn't even those that have lived here, uh, over five years ago, six years ago. It was just since then or whenever it was built. So there's a lot of misunderstanding that happens and I apologize for that. If I offend people, please let me know, I'll fix it. Because this city is important to me. This job of being mayor, you know, I guess I could say, well, I don't care, but I do. And I do because I love the employees that are here. I spent forty years in one of those uniforms hoping that the police would not worry about me at times, but as a fireman, making sure that your homes were safe and people were picked up off of the roads. But that's all enco- encompassed in this. We did not make the police and fire an excuse or use them as an excuse. What we did do is realize that we were gonna do absolutely everything we could a year ago when we gave them that raise. And, and when you say, well, you were just planning on raising taxes anyway, that wasn't the case because we made deep cuts. We didn't buy equipment, we tried to make that difference. And when it all boiled down and we had to come up with all these costs, and believe me, there's a lot of costs involved here, those costs reflect on only the me, there's a lot of costs involved here, those costs reflect on only the amount that we need to cover what we did raise, nothing else. And there's nothing hidden. We're just trying to do the job that we were elected to do and we are doing it honestly. We're not trying to hide anything. I wish, Linda, in your case, I wish we had other ways to pay this, but we have so very few options. And, you know, if if I could say to everybody, oh, don't worry about it, we'll just get through, well, that getting through cuts down the services, cuts down the ability of this city to provide for everybody, children, teenagers, young couples, young couples with kids and us old buggers, we're all included in this and we all have to look at it. And we're doing the best we can. And I wish we had other options. I wish there was gold that was running down the stream and, you know, with two hundred and fifty second feet of water coming down a stream that holds about seven or eight second feet, I really thought it'd be nice to find a gold brick or two, but it didn't come. And on top of everything else, we've had to pay out more money just to get through the flood season. That cost us a lot. And and we're gonna have to cut to find out where we can get it because it's not included in any of this. So I think I answered most of those things. I I just feel like many of you said this very well. I thank you for the kind words and I thank you for an opportunity to serve this city. I love it here. I've lived here all my life and so have many grandfathers. And I don't know that I have any any other place I would call home. I call you my friends. I've welcomed everybody from whoever lived here a week to as old as me. And I thank you for being here. And I think I've answered all the questions. I hope I haven't forgotten anything. We good? Did I say? Seeing none of you have a lawyer sitting next to them. So, yeah, love this place. We're now at a point of the new business and so we have to go through some resolutions. So I would entertain a motion after we have reviewed what's ahead of us. Would you like to go through eight oh one, twenty twenty-three, the adoption of the certified tax rate?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is the item that would set the what what's termed by the state as the certified tax rate. The form that is attached here, which is Form PT eight hundred, is a state-generated form off of their website that would set the tax rate as indicated in all the literature and and all the information that we put out there. But this would be per your motion, could be or would be the the certified tax rate of zero point zero zero one four zero four. And that would generate the additional five hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars that is needed for the the public safety reasons that we've talked about. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Are there any questions? Any comments? Councilmember Montoya?
She said no.
Okay. Then I would entertain a motion.
I have just one thing. I said before that I wasn't sure how I was gonna vote. If you remember in the email I sent you, I said I would, even though I don't support property taxes, just like Mr. Bowen said, I think, I think they're bad. I don't like how they're used. But I said if I get the feeling that the majority of the residents who've done their homework, looked into this and they they're okay with it, then I would try to represent them because that's what I've wanted to do, to represent the people. I'm gonna point out tonight, we have five people talk, three were adamantly against, five were actually supportive of it. Last Thursday, the open house, there were quite a few people, I didn't talk to everybody. It seemed like as a group, half or more were against it. But when I talked to, I don't know, about eight or nine or ten people after the fact or separately during it, they were all actually very supportive of it. They just had a few concerns. So while it seems everyone, you know, like you said, you ask someone if they want their property taxes raised, they're gonna say no. I think through the process we've used and everything that we've done, we've helped a lot of people see what the city does, how it works. You've done something I didn't think would actually work, didn't actually, will actually convince so many people that this was needed and that they would support it as much as they do. So that's definitely going into what I'm thinking right now.
Can I ask a question? From from this point forward, if it goes through, is that portion gonna always go towards our?
Yes.
Yes, it won't change.
One hundred percent.
Yeah, won't change. Next year, it will be included for them.
You can't spend it on?
No, not a penny, not a penny.
The state audits us every year and ensures that's the case.
Okay.
Sometimes it's brought up that, well, we're on a fixed income. Now, I don't dye my hair this color, it just is.
At least you have hair.
Jeff says at least I have some. I am, I pay taxes too. I'm on a fixed income. I'm retired, obviously. Inflation's discussed, you know, it's hurting all of us, you know? Gas prices were were mentioned today. I have a post office box, last year it was sixty-six dollars a year. I went renewed it today, it's a hundred and sixty-six dollars a year.
It's time to get a mailbox.
Linda, would you make a motion on that?
Anyway, my point is the city has the same inflation problems. The water pump that we bought five years ago or even two years ago costs a lot more today. The city has to deal with inflation just like the rest of us. Yet it's it's a government agency, but it consists of a bunch of citizens trying to do what's right.
Thank you. Any other comments? There there is one thing I need to answer and that was the water issue. We have plenty of water. We are different than every other city in this in this county. We have plenty of water, we have plenty of culinary water, we have plenty of water rights, and we have CUP coming very shortly, Central Utah Project Water. So we're we're in very good shape. And if you wanna talk water one day, I'll bore you to tears. We can do that too, but at this point, I think tonight, we're kinda past that. So thank you. I'm sorry, I forgot it, I just saw it on my note, it's right above Dr. Wells. So with that, I'd like to, can I make a comment, please? Sure.
So two things, I wanna touch on the water a little bit because I'm on two water committees, South County Water Committees. Just so the residents know that last year alone, the state legislator sent through twenty-two water bills associated with water. And most of that is tied to the Great Salt Lake. The citizens need to understand that the the state legislator is what controls everything here. They make the, you got lobbyists up there lobbying them constantly to get what they want. And a lot of that, a lot of the legislations that comes out of there affects every city in this state. And it isn't like we can go tell them, no, we can't go against what they say, we have to follow the laws that they come up with up there. Right now, I've I feel like we're being attacked on the fact the state wants to start taking ground and turning it into high-density housing with no city control. To me, that's, again, how do you fight that bureaucracy up there like that? I just want you guys to understand that everything that happens here is controlled by them. We're just the face that you guys, we're the ones you can come and talk to face to face about it. But just understand that we have to vied by the state on all of this stuff. So with that being said, I would be totally against this property tax increase if it wasn't for this situation. Because I support these guys right here. And the fact that we couldn't get even a young man to to sign up to come here and even get put through the police academy had to tell you that we were, our wages were way too low. When you can't even get anybody to even apply to come here. So to me, that was the issue. And I support our police, fire and EMS and I will always support them. So I just had to make that comment. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. We good?
Just look for a motion, I guess.
So we've discussed also the certified tax rate. I would entertain a motion to adopt that rate.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve or accept Resolution zero eight zero one, two thousand twenty-three, adoption of the final certified tax rate for Santaquin City, two thousand twenty-three.
Had a motion for the adoption of the certified tax rate. Is there a second?
Mayor, I'll second it.
Motion seconded by Councilmember Adcock, roll call vote. Councilmember Montoya.
Aye.
Councilman Hathaway.
Aye.
Councilman Meacham.
Aye.
Councilman Sitaway.
Aye.
Councilman Adcock.
Aye.
Vote passes a hundred percent. Now, as we go through the rest of this meeting, there's resolutions where we adopt a budget. Generally, you adopt a budget in the end of June for the coming year. Because we were in truth and taxation, we had to prepare ourselves depending on the outcome and the rules of engagement. And that said, we had to have this open house, the previous open houses, the the public hearing, and we have gone beyond the mark to make sure everybody had the information in front of them. And that is what the budget is about now. We can adopt what we have worked on for the past few months, many months, and move forward with it. Since we can now count on the tax rate as adopted, we can now move forward with the budget. And the budget, we, at this time, we have included those numbers so that we can go forward. So Norm, would you like to run through that for just a minute?
Sure, Man, Council, the the budget has been out there. We've, we're able to finish up the narrative a little bit later than what we had planned, but the the budget numbers have been out there with the package since Friday. I'm happy to go over any portion of the budget, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have on it. The the budget narrative is about a hundred and forty pages, if I remember correctly, and and there's a lot in there. Some of you are familiar with that because you've you've been through budgets before and and essentially what's changed this year is just a few of the discussion items and the numbers themselves for showing the actuals from last year as well as showing the proposed for this year. Again, it does include the 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 property tax increase that was just passed, that is something that was not assumptive. We we didn't assume that that was gonna happen, but we didn't have fourteen different versions that we could put out there. If if for some reason the the tax increase did not go through, then we would have to bring a budget back to you, all four of the budgets back to you at a different time. But as such, the budget is presented for to you for your for your adoption and approval. Again, I'm happy to answer any questions or or comments or concerns that you have about the budget. I know the mayor and I have had some interaction during the day today and we've talked about a few things that are not necessarily monetary, but but just kinda come to light. And he and I are working on some things that we'll likely bring back to you at another time, but I'm happy again to answer any questions that you have.
There, it's light reading, it's been online for quite some time, it's a hundred and forty-four pages, takes you about five minutes to get through it, it's not a big deal. It does stipulate things like this will cover two cars per year for the police, things like that that have been written and are in the information. So please know, there's nothing in here that's hidden. And we are operating this city per state law. So all of these things, we've gone over and over. And I hope I haven't misstated anything, but who knows, I'm not perfect, close to it.
I I'd just like to remind all of us that unlike the federal government, we can't just print money, we have to have a balanced budget. It's a state law, we cannot adopt a budget if it doesn't balance.
So are there any questions? Have you gone through it? Is there anything that came up? I I have one statement that goes with it. As I read through, there were places where there were things like five point five million or M, and then it went on. And in other places, it would say, you know, dollar sign, one point two million, you know, things like that. I would like to make sure that as we go through it, we do a secondary check just to correct those Scribner errors that might be in there, not that affects the body, it's the intent. You know, it's like somebody would say two cars are needed and and yet it is very well spelled out again, hey, this is two cars in perpetuity.
Annually, yes, that's correct.
So the, just the Scribner errors that I'm talking about here. So no other questions? You're good with what you've seen? Then I would entertain a an a motion for the adoption of the final twenty-three, twenty-four budget?
That says twenty-two, twenty-three.
It's a Scribner. We'll go ahead and correct that, but it is the it is the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. I apologize, we didn't catch that on the, it does have the right adoption date and being considered on that date, but you're right, the heading.
Now, that is funny, at least section one is right.
We we apologize for that, but.
No, yeah, section one is correct, just the heading.
Right, it's just the heading. Then we'll correct that.
Scroll down, I'll make a motion.
Yes, sir, thank you.
I'll make a motion, we adopt Resolution zero eight zero two dash two zero two three, adoption of the final fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget.
We've had a motion?
I'll second.
And a second. Councilman Hathaway.
Aye.
Councilman Meacham.
Aye.
Councilman Sitaway.
Aye.
Councilman Adcock. Councilmember Montoya.
She's off, Mayor, she had to leave. So it'll just be the four of them.
Okay.
But she will, she did vote on the first action item and so that's considered as part of her vote.
Well, it was a majority anyway.
It was, you're right.
Yeah. Okay, now, that concludes where we need to be with the budget and with the adoption of the tax rate. And the rest of this is for your entertainment mostly because, and I hope there's a narrative in here, I didn't see it, did you write that?
There is, there is no narrative.
Dang.
You had a year of half experience.
Man, you need to go into three different bodies, Mayor.
You wanna explain why?
Yeah, that that's what I wanted to do. Santaquin is able to do a few things with with money, but only under state law. It's not like, oh, we can reinvent the wheel here and we can sneak some money around, no. For instance, it's been a year now that I've been working on a plan to create an industrial park. And the industrial park, we went to the school board to do tax incentive funds and try to figure out a way to finance it so we could build it because the city owned sixty-six acres, but we had no industrial park. Yet with people I've been meeting with, they wanted to build buildings, they wanted to bring their business here. And so this plan was, we can create what's called a Community Development and Renewal Agency, short for it, CDRA. That allows the city board, which is the mayor as the board chair and the council as members of the board, to act under the direction of the council as the the board, the governing board of the CDRA. So you. So you have to go to the state, you have to register the area and the properties that you're talking about. And by creating this CDRA, we could then draw it up, create a subdivision out of it. This was a subdivision of an industrial park. We didn't have to go out to a developer. We didn't have to pay all these fees for people to do it. But what we did was create this, and with the seat, within the CDRA, we can actually sell the property. And so we go out, we have the property appraised, we divide it into lots. We meet with the businesses that want to come here, and we write up contracts. So we don't have to go through real estate, uh, transactions with a real estate agent. And and the city can handle all of that with our attorney, and he's involved with it all the way through. So we have sold about five or six lots, uh, as a part of this. We have brought this up. It existed over a year ago. Beyond that, we've had CDRA's in other areas. But we've actually sold property, taken that property through this process in a CDRA. And, uh, we have reinvested this money, which is Santaquin citizens' money, and this has been in meetings all year round. And we have now been creating this industrial park. We've got two businesses that are gonna start building very soon. We've got pipes in the ground. We've got agreements with all sorts of things. We let a contract go to do paving and and concrete work. Um, it's well underway, and it hasn't cost anybody anything in this city. Soon we'll have more jobs with that. We will have taxes that are coming off of those properties. This has been a lot of work, and we have done this work, this council and our staff. And, um, it is, it is a a blessing to the city because it's doing something that was not creating any income, any revenue for the city. It's now turning it into jobs and businesses, tax-paying entities. And, uh, it's actually been not easy but fun because we can, we can bring businesses here, and it's doing it. That's industrial. So, uh, we will convene and go into a CDRA. We will also convene and go into the Santaquin Local Building Authority, which is the the same type of thing which was used to pay for the WRF building.
The Public Works Building and the WRF site, correct.
And, uh, then we have the Special Service District, which is a third one. And the Special Service District is an interesting thing, which by under state law, we can take, for instance, water that we get, water shares. Under the old law, if we had water shares thirty years ago or forty years ago, whatever it was, that's it. That's the end of it. Santaquin City owns it. You're done. Under this new one, we can place and have placed a portion of our water shares. For instance, we have water shared from Jordan District and a few other places that little hard to turn on a tap. We call it wet water. And, uh, when we, when we get water here, but when we get other water, it's like hard to get it here if if it's not in local. But you still have to pay a water assessment and you have to deal with it. And if if we were under the old law, how did you get rid of it? You can't sell it, but now, under these newer laws, you can sell water under a special service district. And that's just one thing that we do with this. So it's not anything to line our pockets. It's something to control what's going on around here. And it does allow for people who own property, have property rights, just like you do if you have your house, that wanna develop their land to find more water that would allow them to build homes on that land or to bring a business or to make it a, a commercial site. It's just one of those things you have to do when you are brought into the city. So those three entities, the CDRA, the Local Building Authority, and the Special Service District, we now have to go out of city council, so we take a hat off, and then we go into these different agencies. We adopt a budget and then come back in. It's all out in the open. Everything is published and it's online. So you can read, you can read all these things, but those of you that have sat here and listened to me for the last ten minutes go, oh, that's what that means. Jeez, I don't, hope I don't have to hear him talk about that again. So anyway. Uh, we're in our regular meeting. We're down to item number four, so we need to convene to the sanity, sanity. The Santaquin Community Development and Renewal Agency, the CDRA. I would entertain a motion to do so.
So moved.
Wow.
First, second, third.
First and second.
Would anybody like to second it? Everybody, okay, it's been moved and seconded. Councilman Hathaway.
Aye.
Councilman Meacham.
Aye.
Councilman Sitaway.
Aye.
Councilman Adcock.
Aye.
Now they're board members. We need to go over the resolution of the adoption of the fiscal year budget for the CDRA. Those of you that would like to see kind of what we're dealing with, here are the the figures.
So Mayor and Council, this is the the CDRA board. I will just pull up the budget, and for those that are interested, um, what the mayor has been talking about, this two point four, these two point five four five million dollars is the self-funding of the subdivision and the the rest of the improvements that we haven't already done last fiscal year will will take place with this, and this is again completely self-funded from the the improvements and the development of the project and the sale of the land to help us to be able to do this. So this is, that that's the budget that you're looking at. There's about two and a half million dollars that we will continue to put in the ground that will bring more jobs, potentially sales taxes and and property taxes off of land that was historically not property, uh, did not have property taxes levied because it was city-owned and now it's gonna be privately owned. Happy to answer any questions that you have about that?
So with that, uh, board members, I would entertain a motion for the adoption of this CDRA budget.
So moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilman Adcock.
Aye.
No, board member.
It's board members.
Oh, board member Adcock.
Shit, it's still I.
Board member Sitaway.
Aye.
Board member Meacham.
Aye.
Board member Hathaway. You know, I had in my mind I was gonna say that and it went away. With that in mind, it's, it passes a hundred percent. Um, I would entertain a motion from a board member to go back to our city council meeting.
So moved.
Board member Sitaway moved it. Does anybody wanna second it?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Board member Hathaway.
Aye.
Board member Meacham.
Aye.
Board member Sitaway.
Aye.
Board member Adcock.
Aye.
We're back in the city council meeting. Hello, this is Mayor Olson, and these are the council members.
For a minute.
We need to go into the Santaquin Local Building Authority, uh, would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Councilman Adcock.
Aye.
Councilman Sitaway.
Aye.
Councilman Meacham.
Aye.
Councilman Hathaway.
Aye.
We're now in the Santaquin Local Building Authority.
Mayor and Council, this is the, again, a very similar budget, but this is for the Local Building Authority. This is essentially how the the Public Works Building, the salt storage shed and the and the storage area down there at the Public Works Building was was financed, and this is the annual funding and the payment for that as we go through, and that's why the Local Building Authority exists, one of the reasons. Happy to answer any questions that you have about that.
Entertain a motion to, uh, approve?
So moved.
It's been moved. Is it seconded?
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. Second, I'm gonna do. Board member Hathaway.
Aye.
Board member Meacham.
Aye.
Board member Sitaway.
Aye.
Board member Adcock.
Aye.
I would entertain a motion to, uh, go back to the council meeting.
So moved.
It's been moved by board member Meacham. Is there a second?
Sitaway.
Sitaway.
Oh, shit, was it? I wasn't looking at it.
Yeah, I.
Okay. Second?
I don't think so either.
I seconded.
Well, between the two of you, we got it. Board member Hathaway.
Aye.
Board member Meacham.
Aye.
Board, that's a lot to say, you know, that. Board member Sitaway.
Aye.
Board member Adcock.
Aye.
We're back in the city council meeting. I would entertain a motion to convene to the Santaquin Special Service District.
So moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second.
Councilman Ha- Adcock.
Aye.
Councilman Sitaway.
Aye.
Councilman Meacham. Councilman Hathaway.
Aye.
We're now in the Santaquin Special Service District, and we need to adopt the fiscal year budget for twenty-three, twenty-four. Would you go over that?
Sure, Mayor and Council. So as the mayor indicated, this is where we hold some of the water. Chair, sorry, chair and and board members. Uh, this is where we hold some of the water rights and also where we pay some of the assessments and other things that we need to pay as far as those water rights or water shares are concerned in different areas. So some of that takes place in the reg- regular city budget. Some of it takes place here. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about that.
Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adopt the final fiscal year budget for the Santaquin Special Service District.
So moved.
Board member Meacham made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by board member Sitaway, board member Hathaway.
Aye.
Board member Meacham.
Aye.
Board member Sitaway.
Aye.
Board member Adcock.
Aye.
Motion passes. I would entertain a motion to go back into the city council meeting.
So moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Board member Adcock.
Aye.
Board member, you were gonna catch me on it, weren't you? Board member Sitaway.
I was trying to catch myself.
Board member Meacham.
Aye.
Board member Hathaway.
Aye.
We're back in the city council meeting. First thing I wanna say, we're finished for the night. But the second thing I wanna do is is really thank everybody for being here. I I hope you have a trust in what this council does to work for the city. Uh, there are a lot of, lot of hours put in in behalf to try to make this work. And I wasn't joking. I love this city. I love the people. I've yet to find anybody I hate. You know, I hope I don't have to prove somebody wrong one day, but thank you for being here and thank you for everything. I appreciate it. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Councilman Adcock.
Aye.
Councilman Sitaway.
Aye.
Councilman Meacham.
Aye.
Councilman Hathaway.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you all.